Everyone, we'll call the town council meeting for Thursday, August the eighth to order. This meeting, obviously, is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the Internet by accessing bucksportmain.gov and selecting agendas and minutes and choosing this meeting and clicking on the video button next to the meeting. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. And I would take this opportunity to remind everyone to set their phones to silent if you haven't already. Thank you. Next is a roll call. George.
Councilor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Councilor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonnet.
Here.
Councilor Daniel Ormblig.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Councilor Ed Rankin.
Here.
George. Next is presentation of any town council recognitions. We do have several recognitions this evening. The first is for the Historical Society, which is celebrating its sixtieth anniversary here in Bucksport. So, we are recognizing the Historical Society this evening. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes the Bucksport Historical Society for sixty years of dedicated service in protecting and preserving historical records for the town of Bucksport, Maine. Your continued efforts have ensured that future generations will have the opportunity to understand and appreciate the rich history of the community. And that is, that was signed on July the eighteenth this year. So, I'd like to thank you all. I'm glad that you were able to be here this evening. Appreciate your efforts. I will mention this in a moment. We receive, I received your letter today and for another request, and that will be on our next agenda.
Very good.
Very good.
Maybe you could get a picture of you presenting it?
Absolutely. Who would I, who would, who can I present this to? Tell me, Andrew, what the picture?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We also have a couple of things noted on the agenda. But first, we have Ben Lincoln is here, who has some artwork that he would like to present to the town.
Bring it over to the front here.
Absolutely.
I'll hold it. You can talk about it, or we can both hold it.
Well, it's kind of heavy. So, yeah, when I first heard about the mill back in, the mill project back in twenty fourteen, I'm not exactly sure why, but I just started coming down to Bucks. I live on MDI, so I would just come down periodically and look at the mill and photograph it at various stages. And this was from roughly twenty sixteen, when it was beginning, the decommissioning process was beginning. And so, my idea, what I'd like, what I'm hoping to do is do all of the remaining paper mills in Maine. And if all goes well, what I'd like to do is do this again and donate each drawing to the town in which the mill exists. So, anyway, and I've been contacting Larry, or talking to Larry and Chip and others at the Paper Mill Museum. And this is on loan here, I gather now, to the, to the town office until the museum is ready for it. And then it'll go there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on a minute. Okay. Sue, I don't see you. You're like kidding me.
Are there prints available?
Um, you know what? I'll make sure that you have my email address. I can make prints of it as well, yes. So, yeah.
This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, it's my pleasure. It's absolutely my pleasure.
What year did you?
Our poet laureate, Pat Ranzoni, was extremely excited about this, and I hope she's watching tonight. I gave her directions the best I could on how to watch it on the computer.
Yeah, Pat was the first person I spoke to, but I haven't, I haven't actually met her yet.
What year did you model that, that photo after, that, that drawing?
So, that was roughly, I want to say, November twenty sixteen, I believe, was, was, was when the mill was at that stage. I have another photograph from twenty twenty-two, I believe, when it's just the one building with the one stack left. But, and I'm going to do that, I'm, that's a winter project for this year.
Yeah. I especially appreciate that version where it has both stacks. Yeah, that's nice.
It's got the buildings open, where they were partially demolished. You can see it. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lincoln. Yes. We'll be glad to have it on loan here, and I look forward to it being at the Paperworking Museum for sure. So, as he goes out the door, thank you once again, but thank you, Larry, and everyone else for reaching out or being reached out to by Mr. Lincoln. Thank you. Uh, I believe this is the last item under presentation, but there are some T-shirts, I believe, for the town council.
The bait festival this year was organized by my town staff, the office, and Mr. Rotel is here. It was a big cog in that wheel. But them and all their volunteers wrote, "Dear councilors, thank you for your generous support. We could not do this without you, and we appreciate you all," the festival volunteers. And there's a shirt for each one of you, so you get a shirt.
Thank you.
We'll see if he says Paul's.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was a good day.
Some of us, what's that?
Oh, he's going to model it for us.
Good job, Rich.
Oh, good job, Rick.
Yeah, I was, I had the pleasure of being down there for the better part of the day. It was a great parade. The waterfront was quite busy. I saw a lot of faces that were familiar to me and a lot of faces that weren't, and I think both are a good sign. And the weather couldn't have been better. So, yeah, it was just a really, really good day, and I really do want to appreciate Rich and everyone else here on the staff. Really put in a lot of work, just as they did the year before, and really made it a success. So, thanks to them as well. Thank you. All right. Next is, we do have minutes to consider from our last meeting on July the eighteenth. Our town council meeting minutes. The council, like, person.
Approved.
Seconds. Any questions? Any favor? Opposed? You? Uh, next, we have, we've received, and we need to review some correspondence. We have the aforementioned Historical Society request, which will be on our next agenda. We have Roanoke Police Call on July the twenty-second. We have the thank you from the festival volunteers. We have the ridership reports from May and June from Down East Transportation. We have a Roanoke Police Call on July the twenty-seventh, and we have a letter of appreciation from Chief Winchester for our Animal Control Officer, Autumn Bishop. Any questions on any of those? Thank you. Uh, we have one ordinance to consider this evening. It's a second reading amendment to Article Nine, Referendum and Initiative, Section nine dot oh four. Ordinances, orders or resolves submitted to popular vote. The purpose of the amendment is to increase the amount required for referendum from three hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. There will be a public hearing on that later. We could do the public hearing now if there's no objection. Chair, open the public hearing for the amendment to Article Nine, Referendum and Initiative, Section nine dot oh four. Ordinances, orders or resolves submitted to popular vote. As I mentioned, the purpose is to increase the amount required for referendum from three hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. Sue, would you like to comment?
Well, the, the problem that we would be running into relates to the fact that in twenty nineteen, we could buy an ambulance for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and get it in six months. And now, we can't buy an ambulance for less than three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and it takes two years. And it would be a severe difficulty in acquiring equipment if we can't raise this. This isn't, it's, it's a, would make it very difficult to run the organization if we couldn't replace plow trucks or ambulances on a regular schedule without having to go to a referendum vote.
Any comments or questions from the public? From the council? Close. And this will be on our next agenda, correct?
No, you're boarding right now.
Oh, all right then. How? Pleasure.
Motion approved.
Second. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Uh, discussion items. The first is dams owned by Bucksport Mill LLC.
So, um, we've received our notification. I told you that at the last meeting. The, as of this afternoon, Bucksport Mill slash AIM had still not resubmitted the petition to walk away from the mills. There's a better term for it, but that's what I call it. And they have until August eleventh to do so without having to do brand-new notifications to all the parties. The communities of Blue Hill, Surrey, Penobscot, Orland, and Bucksport met, a representative from each one except Blue Hill, which couldn't be there, but wants to participate, as well as representatives from Alamoosick and Totty's Lake Association, met to discuss the idea of working together on this to make sure we were all sort of on the same page and everyone had, had access to all the same information. And, and so, there's another meeting of, of that group scheduled for next week. And in the meantime, I've reached out to the DEP with a list of additional questions, information that they feel, we feel, would be necessary. No one could make a decision about a dam if you have no information. And right now, we have no information about anything. And the petition that, that they filed initially had no information about anything other than when they bought them and where they were and, but nothing about maintenance costs or long-term plans or revenue streams or, or MEMA requirements that, or, nor did they address the fact that the majority of these dams have huge obligations and deed restrictions for properties that surround these lakes, that people have deeded rights to certain water levels. And if you take on this, then you take on all of those obligations along with it. So, it was a pretty extensive list. The, the group that met came up with some. I added some more. I sent it to the DEP dam person and requested that they, they make it part of the requirements for the submission of the petition. Because without this kind of information, a community couldn't make an intelligent decision on it if you don't know anything about what you might be getting. And I don't have a response that says yes or no, but they also haven't refiled either. So, but we have sixty days from the date that we were notified, which was July fifteenth. If they refile, we have sixty days from that date to hold a public meeting to discuss the idea of whether the town would look to take over a dam or dams. And each of the communities has that same sixty-day window. And so, it's not to lose our place in trying to affect an outcome here. If they refile, we will have a, it would be scheduled at our next council meeting. But without any information, we can hold a meeting, and the outcome can be and likely would be that there is not sufficient information available and that we would then request a hundred and eighty-day extension from the DEP for us to get whatever information would be necessary. And honestly, the law is poor. The law is a, is not a good law, in terms of protecting communities that, in which some multinational corporation wants to walk away and leave five communities holding millions of dollars' worth of liability. But there is a, there is legislative solution that could be made if we can get this process as far as January, which is my goal, because I, I think most anything else is, is, there's very little on the side of the communities in the current law. And so, that's where we are right now, where we'll see what Monday brings and move forward when they, from there. But our, our sixty-day meeting will be at the next council meeting on this topic. But with no information, there is no way anyone, and even if you got information, if you decided for some unknown reason that you wanted to take on a dam, you can't on your own. It's a liability of more than three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, or you, it would be a referendum vote. And by the time we get to that place, this election has gone by. So, it, and every community is faced with the same. There, those that have town meetings as opposed to council manager still are constrained by having to have a special town meeting or those kind of things, which require days and notification and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I, I think that, that all of the communities will be holding a meeting, but I'm pretty sure that the outcome will be the same in all of them, because nobody has anything, you know, any information that could be enough to make that kind of addition, decision. And, oh, Rich and I met with Bucksport Generation Jira, who's an interested party, because they have contractual agreements with Bucksport Mill regarding water from Silver Lake. And they're active in this process as well with their own stuff, but are supportive of the town and it's the path that we're sort of setting forward there. There to, as is Main Water, who also has guaranteed rights to water from Silver Lake. So, um, I think that's, I think that's.
Did the DEP say they were going to ask them for that?
They did not say if they were or they were not. They acknowledged that they got my request. I think, honestly, I'm sure they have to run it by the AG's office to see if it's legal for them to add that to the requirements of petition. But I tried to be persuasive in saying, "If you expect us to do something, you can't expect us to do it with zero information." That, I didn't ask for their personal birthdays. I asked for maintenance records and, and, you know, expenditures and revenue streams. Silver Lake is a revenue stream for them. You know, I want to know how much they're making. If you want someone to take it over, you ought to have enough, an idea of what that revenue stream is and what the contractual obligations would be to the entities you have those relationships with. So, I believe that one of the lake associations, when they were talking to them about acquiring these, they requested a lot of information, and they got nothing.
That's what I was wondering, because it doesn't feel like they've been doing the correct maintenance anyway, so that number probably wouldn't be forthcoming.
But there, there is, in some of the purchases and sale agreements, there were requirements for lake plans, for capital plans, for a whole lot of things that, that were part of a sale requirement. They have to exist. They were part of those documents. I, I just don't have access to them, and we, I think we should. So, it's a, it's a process. We will follow the rules and, and I, I hope to change the rules before we're at the end of this, because I really think that none of these communities can afford the kind of liabilities that those dams bring. Orland already has one. It's looking for huge money through the Penobscot River Trust in order to do work that needs to be done on one. They have two. Sixty percent of the value of Orland lies in the properties on Totty and Alamoosick. Sixty percent.
Wow.
You know, it, it's more devastating if they were to lose the water in those lakes than it was for Bucksport to lose the mill. We, we lost two hundred and thirty million dollars in valuation, which was forty percent of ours at that time. They would lose sixty percent of their valuation if they, if that happened. And the, the smallest number is Blue Hill, and they have six million dollars in valuation on eleven properties that are on Totty. So, the Craigbrook Fish Hatchery, which can't say anything because it's federal and they're supposed to be talking about taking out dams, which they're not, they just spent a gazillion dollars on a wastewater system that counts on Alamoosick being there, so it doesn't contaminate the river. So, it, it's, there's a lot of public good. Unfortunately, it puts the town's decisions ahead of review by IFNW and the other agencies. If it, if it was opposite, then the public value of these dams would be established upfront. But I'm rambling. I apologize. It, there's a lot, there's a lot that we're trying to accomplish as a coherent, cohesive, reasonable group, as opposed to run around screaming and shouting, which I don't think it's anybody anywhere will, you know. I, I think I sent you all the list of what we asked for, for information. It's not, um, it's nothing.
It's reasonable.
It, it was nothing unreasonable. It's not trade secrets. So, we'll see. I, I think that, I think the department is being very careful. They've never processed an application of this nature, a petition of this nature, all the way through. They've never, it hasn't happened. So, and certainly not three dams like these. So, we'll see. But all I can tell you is that we are as on top of it as we can be in terms of timing and getting meetings done and requesting information and talking to people who can help write legislation if we can get there and that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Dad.
I do know, she does very well with that.
No, I mean, yeah, I, I was at that meeting too, and the deputy mayor is, is officially on that committee. And I, I guess the only thing I would add is that I, I really feel like, to sum up what Sue just said very briefly, the other communities that are involved here are really on top of it as well in terms of doing the needful here, so to speak. And that's ve- very encouraging. At least it was for me as an observer at that meeting, who tried to keep his mouth shut, but didn't always succeed. But anyway, um, yeah, I, I kind of sometimes tend to believe that, especially in things like this, you need to follow the money, and there's a lot of money at stake here. And I think that can be looked at as a, as a negative, but it can also be looked at as a positive. There's a lot to lose here, and so, anyway, we'll see how it goes. I do thank you, Sue, because you put in a lot of effort here, and the committee has elected Sue as our, as the chair. And I think that was a good decision, because Sue is going to make sure that the process is followed and that, that there's one voice. She's kind of experienced in that, so.
One of the, one of the other communities nominated her for that position.
That's right.
It was not me, and I'm obviously very much so in favor of it. But the other communities were very much so in favor of putting her experience to use for this, this situation, so.
No pressure here, huh?
Yeah, pressure.
Yeah, let's go out with a bang.
Ralph?
Sure, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you for taking a quick question. Do you have any, can you make any statement of what the purpose of the legislation is that you foresee trying to get enacted shortly in the new session?
The purpose would be to require an owner who wishes to link, who can't find a buyer to, especially if they've had revenue streams from those dams, to provide money to a new owner for X years of maintenance, that, that there be a fiscal requirement on an owner who's looking, who's used these dams as a money-making enterprise, and it's, might not be making as much money, so they want to walk away from it. There, there would be a fiscal note attached to that. And that the, the petition process itself would have a more robust list of requirements for what has to be provided by the owner who wants to walk away. It's, it, I'm not looking for rocket science, those are, because the, the things that are missing are fiscal. That, that's the problem with the whole thing. And that the reason I asked DEP to include those requests is we don't have any way to compel anybody to give us anything. The only one in this process who has the legal ability to compel information if someone wants to, to do it is DEP. So, that was my major argument. I, if you don't do it, we can't. So, anyway, money. To be totally blunt, money. Yes. Hans?
Just three things really quickly. One, I hear from people in the Alamoosick Lake Association. High praise for Sue. And I consider you some sort of wizard of oz to solve this whole thing. Not to put more pressure on the news people, but anyway, that's great. The, the other thing is, in my talks with people, and news people especially, I think it's really important to not separate this issue from the landfill issue. I see and read so much treating this as a separate issue. It's not. I mean, the overall story is little town against evil giant Goliath here, or AIM. And they're controlling both the landfill and the dams on the lake. So, it really is a common denominator between the two stories. And that came, especially cleared me yesterday, I think it was. I was talking to the Land and Fake at Great Pond Mountain Trust, and they had not yet opened their letter from the Orland Selectmen. They were not yet aware of this threat coming from AIM to drain the lakes. And they are really heated up, and I was wondering why. And it's really because the Great Pond Trust owns three miles of frontage on the Dead River up above Alamoosick Lake there. So, they have a very strong vested interest, and I would urge any collaborative or organization, and I'm hearing good things about the towns working together. I would urge them to apply all of that to the landfill also, because it's really one big watershed in the shadow of the mountain. But the, um, where was I going with that? Anyway, that's about it, to include Great Pond Mountain in the, in the, the trust there, in the, in the meeting, I would say.
That, that's part of the plan as we move forward, to do more outreach to impacted organizations such as, or organizations which may be interested in participating, such as Great Pond and, and Jira and Main Water and others. We started with, the only entities with any legal responsibility in this law are the towns. They, we're the ones that have clocks ticking, sixty days, you know, that, or you lose your ability to impact things. So, we started with the towns, because we need to have the same thing going when everybody. thing going when everybody has their sixty day meeting and, and expanding that for additional. I mean, the fact that Great Pond Mountain has got land for Maine's future money to do that, that development along there and, and that this would have a substantially negative impact on that is huge information that will become part of the record as we
Right, right.
as we look at that too.
Yeah, so my only thing would be to keep this group of towns together for all, all the landfill issue also. I mean, they're allies, really. Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Question, anything from the council? Thank you, everyone. I'm sure there'll be more to come. Uh, next, we do have three resolves on, on the agenda this evening. The first is resolve twenty twenty-five dash zero four to approve the sewer commitment for April twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-four. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Q? Uh, next is resolve twenty twenty-five dash zero five to approve the Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee ballot. That was included in your packet. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review that. How is the council, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
Second, all in favor? And lastly, there is resolve twenty twenty-five dash zero six to approve purchase of a body for the public, for a public vehicle truck. That was also included in your packet.
Motion to approve, second.
Second, questions? All in favor?
Just like to make a comment on that, that, uh, particular purchase, that is the type of thing that, because of the staff that we have, uh, they've got a lot of extra time out of that, that a lot of private businesses probably were replaced sooner, uh, than now. And, uh, the preservation of that whole truck with the purchase of that body, um, allowed us to keep what would be probably an eighty, eighty-five thousand dollar replacement for the next few years. So that's a, that's a good move and I'm thankful that we have the staff that we have out there to think the way they're thinking to move things around.
I would agree. There are times I wish my last name wasn't quite as long as it is. I'm almost there. There you go.
I'll trade you.
Uh, let's see. We do not have any resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections this evening. Nor do we have any, uh, any approvals of quit claims, discharges, and Ds. We do, however, have the town manager report.
Okay. Speaking of the landfill, uh, I spoke with DEP a week ago to ask about the additional water tests that were done, due to be done in May. A representative called me back after checking with Haley Ward about the tests, only to find that they had not actually done them. The firm indicated that it was a mix-up with an email and that letters were sent out to the property owners last Monday to notify of the testing. In addition, the replacement of the temporary liner, which will be just a dirt cover, is supposed to be completed by September first. And failure to do so will result in a notice of violation from the department, which would be the first one of those that's been issued in regard to this landfill since we started this. In addition, I received a call from an elected official who had been contacted by Haley Ward on behalf of Bucksport Mill LLC about interest in the landfill. I do not believe that entity will be pursuing the offer. Um, DE reported that they were told that there were many other entities interested in the landfill after being told that none of the original three that had been identified, um, had reported any interest. Haley Ward is the engineering firm that works for Bucksport Mill LLC in regards to the landfill. And they also have been the engineers that have done the monitoring of the town's closed landfill for many years. Yesterday, I notified the firm that we would be changing engineering firms at year end for our landfill monitoring. Given the fact that they also represent Bucksport Mill slash AIM and are doing work for them in soliciting entities to reopen that landfill and that that is not in the best interest of Bucksport, it seemed prudent to sever that relationship. Um, tax bills went out the week after our last council meeting. Payments are coming in well. I've been doing my best to answer questions related to the tax bill since our assessment will be out until late September on maternity leave. People should not panic. The deadline for abatement requests is not until the end of the year. There is, there is plenty of time if you have questions. I'm making a list of those who wish to have their information reviewed. The majority of questions this year so far are from those who participated in the one-year tax stabilization program who did not see the impact last year that others did. Jackie Hunt plans on retirement in December. Plans are that George will take the clerk position, but I will be advertising shortly for a deputy clerk position in order to leave enough time to advertise, interview, and get someone on board and trained before Jackie leaves. I will be attending the annual Maine Town and City Managers Association Conference at Sunday River next Wednesday to Friday. I have been asked to be a speaker at one of the sessions this year regarding the changing role of a town manager. I think I was asked because I am one of the longest-serving active managers in Maine at the moment. And finally, Rich and I had a great meeting on Tuesday, August sixth, with the representatives of Bucksport Generation slash Injera and a representative from the Maine Department of Economic Development. We discussed issues of common interest, namely the dam situation, as well as opportunities that may exist to work with them to help bring additional development to the site that will reduce their carbon footprint and help Maine reach its energy goals. And finally, there will be a meeting on August twentieth at one thirty PM at the Bucksport Town Office for the purpose of electing a municipal officer who is a resident of the Commissioner's District to serve as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Questions? How many years is Jackie?
Twenty? Hmm?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Uh, let's see.
But I can tell you she's anxious to be, if she won mega bucks, she would be gone tomorrow. Only because she's ready to retire.
So would I.
My husband says I'm the only person on the face of the earth.
Paul's gonna say.
Or if they won mega bucks, we'd still be at work the next Thursday.
Yeah, exactly. Another signature, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep. Two N's, two S's, two Ts. All right. Um, we have set public hearings and, or hold public hearings at approval of any licenses or permits. Uh, we have a number of them this evening. Uh, we have, uh, a festival license, uh, for the, from the village, uh, for Ghostport, uh, on, uh, for October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve, second. Questions? We also have a food service and liquor license from Warren's Waterfront Restaurant.
Motion to approve, second.
Questions? In favor? And we have from Wednesdays on Main, uh, the Summer Event Series on August twenty-first, oh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, performance from any of the Rainmakers.
At the gazebo.
At the gazebo, yes.
I was gonna ask, where is that? Because I don't have any idea, so.
Motion to approve, second. Questions?
All in favor? Next is discussion of items not on the agenda for the council or public. We will begin with public this evening, from the public. Very good. Anything from the council? I'll say something. Wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't, would it? Um, I think the town manager's had a lot on her plate over the last, uh, certainly six weeks, well, the last, almost ten years. But the last six weeks especially, um, have been something else and I, with the landfill and the dam situation. And I think this is an opportunity, I'd like to take an opportunity to, um, for lack of a better way of expressing it, um, making sure that everyone is aware that the town council has her back. I am very confident, and I have not spoken to every member of this council individually, but I am very confident that the town of Bucksport has no interest in the landfill up on the river road being reopened and used for any purpose. And I am in this position to say that this evening because of what the town manager discussed with us a little while ago from a private firm who was obviously, as we've talked about at several meetings, uh, operating from what I would call a conflict of interest, um, basically marketing, or to steal a term from another member of this council, serving as a real estate agent, uh, for that landfill. And I will state publicly that the town of Bucksport, if, if you are contacted and that, anybody lets you know that that landfill is something, the town of Bucksport does not have any interest in that, period. And there, it will be an interesting conversation between your municipality and ours. And if that can take a little bit of heat from, cool off Sue's phone from a week or two, from the, from the number of calls we're getting on that, then so be it. Um, Hans, I will add something to what you said a little bit ago. I, unfortunately, we're probably going to be in the position to treat the dam situation and the landfill, so, landfill situation as two separate problems. But we will not forget what's going on behind the scenes and what's driving both of those. And I sat here a few months ago and talked about a perception problem at, at a bureau that, in the state of Maine. And now I'm going to talk about a perception problem with AIM and Bucksport Mill LLC. And because the perception I have of them right now is ineptitude and apathy. Because th- they submitted a, a garbage proposal to the state of Maine about these dams that was, it's probably gracious to call it incomplete. It's created a number of work for these communities, including Bucksport, um, on top of what they're doing with the landfill. So I didn't poll, I'm just one member of this council. I didn't poll the rest of the council, but I will say this as one member of this council. I don't have the high, a very good perception or impression of AIM and Bucksport Mill LLC right now and their commitment after profiting for a number of years off what, off a number of properties here in the town of Bucksport moving forward. I'll leave it at that.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Done.
And I'll back a couple of things on that stating that, um, a lot of our resources are tied up playing so-called defense right now with a lot of things. And we have a lot of very good things going for us that we're trying to work on with schools and fields and a lot of things that are very close to us here as home. And, uh, the amount of time that Sue and the other town employees have to put into, uh, what I'll call defense for a general term, uh, is too bad, uh, because it slows down our momentum for a lot of the things that we're putting into place moving forward.
It's wasting time.
Yeah, so if we could all just keep that in mind as, uh, everyone is working, uh, on subjects that probably weren't thought of when they took their positions, that would, that would be good for them, so.
I, I can tell you that I really, I really tried not to farm the landfill stuff and the dam stuff onto other staff.
Oh, we know. We know, and that's exactly what I'm saying.
Because I, they are, we do have many important things that everybody's got a lot on their plate. But it is, it is frustrating when I'm spending thirty percent of my time on one company. And that's what it feels like right now. That, that, the amount of, of headspace that I'm devoting to try and outthink the next step of these two things is... Other stuff doesn't necessarily get done, but, but I, I haven't tried to, to screw up everybody else's life along with my own in the process, but, but I know that they, I have said to several of them, if, if I don't appear to be paying attention, that, it's not that I'm not paying attention. It's that there's only so many hours in the day, days in the week, and every time I get one more of these calls from a entity that said, "So, I, I understand there's an economic opportunity with landfill." It's like, oh my God, I have to go through the same thing I've already gone through four times, you know?
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, absolutely.
But we're for a no, so that's.
I mean, that's the point though, right?
Yep.
We're for no's. And so it's working to that point, that people are not walking through that door. Once they hit Bucksport, they ask us where we are, what we think, they're, they're turned away pretty quickly. So I think that's a success that we can, oh, so far.
And it's not over, because we didn't open, you know, accept their plans in the beginning with open arms. Their intent is to hurt and cripple us. And if that doesn't work, just, they're gonna create, make our lives miserable for a while, so.
The clock is ticking. They've got a closure plan due November first.
Don's gonna call. He also had something due September first.
Yes, that has to be cap, that has to be covered.
I know. Thank you for allowing the public to speak again.
Absolutely.
Your speech inspired me, Paul, so I have to, I have to tell you.
Can we have that recorded? Actually, it's recorded.
Uh-oh.
The, the zest in your voice and, and, and the commitment in your voice is, is, was tremendous, so I, I want to thank you.
Sometimes enough's enough.
But I also, as, as somebody who has invested some time in this myself and who's been, who's been asking questions and speaking to the DEP and from a citizen's point of view, and we have been continuing to do our work, I assure you. The DEP has slowly moved, slowly moved. I was told yesterday by Karen Knutti, who manages both Juniper Ridge and, and this landfill, that she, she feels she was misled, misled. That was her, that was as strong as she would get, but it sounded like to me it was, like she got lied to relative to the May thirtieth deadline, oh, we've got it done. No, it, that's, that's what I was told by DEP yesterday and continuing to try to stay on top of this. I, I, the Haley Ward thing had to happen. Total conflict of interest that was being allowed to happen within the system, and it's okay in the system. Because that's how things are done. So just be, you know, conscious of that. But the DEP has been very slow here, in my opinion. It's been very slow. They have not cited them. They're not gonna cite them with these well things or, at all, even though they've messed up, possibly lied to the DEP about it. There's no, no sanctions or things that can happen other than we were disappointed. So I think we've, the town of Bucksport has got to be really solid and, and, and really with, as, as you were tonight, Paul. The citizens are there too. And I think I can speak for, for a group of us who've been doing our work. And, uh, we did speak again to the state hydrologist, Randy Gord, uh, Russell, Randy Gordon at the University of Maine, who is the hydrologist up there about the wa- the well system. And I think that one, that one is going to honestly be looked at at some point. Uh, if, if these two wells turn out to have any problem at all, or anybody, and, because we've got different reports other than just two. We've got reports about this whole side from Mr. Gordon. So, um, I appreciate the, the zest in your voice tonight, Paul, and I appreciate the councils and, and the hard work that everybody's putting in at this point on, on this. And Susan, thank you for, for your help.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Uh, next, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment and scheduling of committee meetings. I do know that before the next meeting, we have a, um, the, the regular meeting at seven o'clock, we have a meeting that begins at
Five thirty, it's the NIMs training.
Yep. And it seemed like there was going to be another.
There's gonna be a, a public hearing on the dams to meet a sixty day requirement.
And that will be before or after, during the meeting?
Yep. I, I believe it will be that day. I, we were served on the fifteenth, um, our next, we could, we could do it the first meeting in September if we, it will all depend on whether they refile.
Oh, yeah.
If they get the, they submit stuff and refile before the eleventh. If not, it's gonna be moved out because the whole clock starts ticking again, so I don't know that. I, I would prefer to do it sooner rather than later. Um, but strategically, it may be better to wait till later and then ask for the hundred and eighty days because you're closer to the sixty days. So it'll either be next meet or the other one after. I will ask our attorney about
Be September twenty.
Timing, yeah.
We gotta get till January.
Hmm?
We've gotta get to January.
We've gotta get to January. I, I believe, I mean, I, just my personal opinion that it's a lousy law, but.
Mr. Mayor, there are two other meetings open next week.
Yes.
The twelfth is the Economic Development Committee.
Yep.
And the thirteenth is the public workshop for the downtown Bucksport coastal resilience master plan. So if anyone here appreciates the Bucksport Water Fund, I would encourage you to please attend that meeting. We've only received thirty-eight surveys to this point, and we published in the Enterprise twice, and I'll come in as well.
And repeat that, so that, yep.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me. I know, I listened to some meetings earlier and I couldn't hear myself either. So the twelfth, Economic Development, will be here at six o'clock. And the thirteenth is a public workshop, which will be aired, but we will not be able to take any participation remotely because it is a workshop. It'll be here in this office from six to seven thirty, and it's for the downtown Bucksport Coastal Residency Master Plan in conjunction with the waterfront committee. And it's through the ship grant that we've got through the state of Maine DMR. So if the waterfront walkway is of a concern to you, I encourage the public members of the council, I believe I sent to all a public, a personal invite, as well as the Economic Development Committee. So please do show up. We've had a survey that's been out for well over two months, published on Facebook, published on the website, in the Bucksport Enterprise twice, and we've got thirty-eight responses. I know more than thirty-eight people use them like this waterfront. So please, if you don't use the internet, come to the town office, we have hard copies. If you don't want to do a survey, please come to the workshop next Tuesday at six o'clock right here.
Can you put that notice, can you print it and laminate it, maybe stick it to a great stake at a couple of the entrances along the...
It's been on these doors for well over a month.
Right, I knew that, but I'm talking about on the waterfront, as far as like when people leave the parking lots, would that help at all or not?
It's good, it wouldn't hurt.
Maybe they...
So Rich, is this part of the residency plan that the town voted in order to move forward?
There are two, there are two residency plans. One is a master plan for the waterfront, a ship grant that's with GEI Consultants and the waterfront committee. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had talked about potentially relocating the walkway over by Hoffman Point. We talked about maybe making it asphalt. We talked about maybe grazing it, whatever we could do legally. And then the second one is, I think the one you're referring to, that you're working with, Alan Craft and friends. There's a committee of about seven or eight of us, Tom's on that, Ben's on that, Steve's on that. And that's where it's, the state has sent me two ideas that you, that you can utilize. I think that's the one you talked about.
No, I was talking about the one we voted for, like...
Oh, the PPI.
Oh, that's the PPI.
That's the PPI.
I mean, I'm meeting, and I'm a little confused by all these different things. So maybe there might be some other citizens that are too, like which one would, you know, like, I, when I read that and I saw that there was going to be that meeting next week, but I thought, well, that must be going into this other plan. And then I wondered, have we gotten that? Did we get the grant, the big, that we voted to have the town move, so?
Yeah.
We did?
So, so the voters...
Was it accepted?
Well, the voters approved, and we were waiting on response back from DOT. And if you remember, we had been saying all along that it was going to be roughly ten million, ten million, ten million. And then we were given some bad news that actually it was going to be more like twelve million, so we sent it to the voters for twelve million. DOT called a couple of weeks ago, and I believe I mentioned it at the July eighteenth meeting. DOT called back, and instead of having to do fifty-fifty for project engineering, they're going to take ninety, and we're going to take ten. We're going to be back to that lower number that we had discussed.
So did they accept our, so our, was our proposal, application was accepted?
No. No, we're with them right now. They're doing all the work behind the scenes.
Okay.
There are ten grants, I think we spoke earlier, Dan, I said nine. There's ten grants in the works. And a bunch of them are coordinated together, so it is very hard to keep them all together. I'm trying to make sure that the public knows that they have the correct acronyms on them. And I'm also making sure that they end up in the Bucksport Enterprise more so than just Facebook. And like to make a pledge on all these doors.
I just didn't understand what it was.
That's what, there's a lot.
I think there's, yeah, so, thank you.
Well.
Paul, there is a cemetery committee meeting too before the next council meeting, just to point out.
Four thirty.
On the twenty-second, four thirty, got it, thank you. Do you have anything else on that one? If there's nothing else, Chair wants to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Same.
In favor? Opposed? Thank you.